All right, it's seven thirty. Please stand for pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Roll call of members. Here. 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 This is turning.
Here.
This is God.
Here.
All right, acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meetings. Motion for way of reading.
Let me stand.
Stand. How we make this change to?
Further change.
Further change.
Yeah, I'll have a adjusted when I make the final copy of that one.
Okay, all in favor? All right, so notification of meetings and events to the public and news media. Bloopers. Nothing now. Finances.
Nothing just yet.
Legislation?
Nothing.
Police?
Nothing.
Pardon? Oh, just started the regular scheduled meeting on October.
First?
First Tuesday. First Tuesday of the month.
Streets?
Before our next council meeting. I want some notices.
All right, boards, air be.
We'll be meeting on Thursday, October 3rd at 7:00 p.m. here at village hall.
Planning?
Tomorrow at 7 o'clock here. Also, the historic preservation committee, it's a subcommittee, the planning will be meeting Wednesday, the 25th at 7:00.
So any board of appeals? Yeah, Western Reserve Fire District?
Just to let everybody know that there'll be an open house. It's on Sunday, September 29th from Nunda 3, and it's at Station 92, which is located on 170. It'll be an open house in dedication for the new addition. October, I'm sorry, September 29th, which is a Sunday.
Forest Board?
Next, 4th Tuesday.
And Highland Memorial?
We don't have them scheduled.
We'd like to schedule. Some of the members would like to get together and talk about Christmas decorations and from the other. Can we meet Tuesday, the 24th at 3 o'clock?
Tuesday, 24th?
On that right, Ken?
Yes.
Tuesday, 24th, 3 o'clock.
I'll give over the back. What we want to be here, let's meet a, no, let's meet a village agreement because we want to talk about decorations.
Between power. At what time?
3 o'clock. Would you need to contact Bob and I'll take care of the rest. Share that, okay?
Okay, report from mayor, nothing to write in. The two things I have is, we had talked at the last meeting, and Bill sent me an email about the school board passing a resolution about the electric service. I talked to superintendent J. N. F. A. yesterday, we had a work session last night, and he wasn't sure if they would get it done then, but they have a meeting next week, I believe, and told me he would make it done for that. I just told him basically to have it known that, from their language, that they know about the electricity on their property. Anything in the future would be done with permits and inspections, and any changes or whatever would have to be proved out. So, just so they're on board and there's no problems in the future. Don't get that to me, let me start. Then IGS Energy, our electrical aggregate, has our new rate starting November this year until October 14, 2014. It is going to be $4.59 per MCF, where it was last year. But that's what everyone else has done too, Boardman, Youngstown, and Ken Field, Pearl Township, are all the same. They will be sending letters out to people, and there's always an opt-out thing. If you don't want to do it, you're not entitled to do it. Any information, they have a 1-800 number for IGS Energy. They want you to do it directly through them, not through us, because they obviously know more about it than the villages. That will be starting in November 1st.
What's your?
$4.59. I think it was last year's $3.99, $3.99, something like that. I think it'd be less. I don't have gas around here, I guess not.
Actually, except for major board?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, report from fiscal officer.
Okay, let's circulate around the list of bills and signatures. You'll notice on here that I have the bill for Butch McCree at $92,988. So as we get the motion later on, I will add that one on, $1,490. The official bank reconciliation as of August 31st is being completed. Everything is all reconciled, and I am circulating that for your signatures. August numbers are in front of you. They look pretty good so far. And as we're starting now to roll into the fourth quarter of the year, we may have to make some, you know, light out of shuffles here, but I'll be watching that, so as anything happens, I'll let you know. And the last item on my list is the incorporation ordinance amendment for $1,490. Enter report.
I wish to accept this report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I forgot to say in my report that the violations bureau has been balanced for Ohio suburbs. I'm sorry, you guys remind me. Sorry.
All right, anything for deputy clerk?
As of line on?
Obviously, yes.
What will be the November meeting dates? The election night?
They have to do, I should be a Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 6th?
The 3rd, Tuesday.
Okay, and I'll be here on the 6th, and I will be at the Ohio Veterans Hall of Fame, accepting on behalf of my father. Someone else will have to take this.
Seven, November?
November 6th, yes.
Nothing else? Dave, you have anything else from zoning?
No.
That's discussed. A report from solicitor.
Great. First thing is about the tree. It was interesting that in the venue, there is an article about Youngstown City, which took down about 200 and some trees last year in double strips that they paid for. You know, that does not correspond with my reading of the law and how it applies directly to the land over there on Riverside. I did get the letter from Mr. Yule, and on it was the explanation for why the village paid years ago for his treaty to take it down. This is from 2003, doing in Inova. The reason that the village council agreed with Mr. Kish, who was Mr. Yule's attorney, was they checked the plaque. Remember I said they went down and checked the plaque? I did. When they went down and checked the plaques, it indicated that, in their opinion, South Main Street is a 66-foot wide street, and then if you go from the center of the street, which I remember talking about now, to where the tree was, it was within 33 feet of the center of it, which in their opinion made it on the village property. At the time, I thought that was correct. I'm not so sure now. And the reason why is, I don't know that if we automatically own the area from the center of the street, half, you know, half the distance over. What I want to do, and I want to talk to council about it, is have a property lawyer who doesn't, who does titles and deeds. I want to call him, Don Liam, and get an opinion from him and see how much it would cost him to give an opinion as to about who owns that property, even though it's within that 33-foot area and on a double strip. And then I have a better idea as to whether or not we own it or they own. I understand the argument now, and I wasn't as clear before. Their argument is, Villa Jones everything from halfway from the median line of the road, 66 feet total, 33 feet on each side. And if you go within that distance, then the double strip falls within it. I don't know that I agree with that. So I like to get an opinion from someone that does this all the time as to whether or not that double strip is ours or Mr. Yule's. And the thing that's interesting, his lawyer said that in as much as a tree is located on the village property and not on the plan of life owned by Mr. Yule, it's the village's responsibility to trim it. So you seem to agree that whoever owned the property on which that tree sat, it's their responsibility, that I thought as well. Question is, who owns that property? So what I'd like to do is, I like to call Don Liam and ask him how much it would cost to give an opinion to the village, what he'd have to do to check it. He'd have to check the deed, he'd have to check the plaques, and give us an opinion as to who owns it. And then I would have a better idea as to what we can do. So you don't have to okay anything tonight. I'll ask him what came out of the.
But Anthony?
Yeah.
We got an ordinance. If it's ours, it don't matter. It's the property owner's responsibility. We got an ordinance. Why are we messing around with this guy?
Because, just like our ordinance about the signs is probably in violation of what the law is, even if it's our ordinance, I have to agree that it's a legal and enforceable ordinance before I can tell the village to go ahead and do something. And I agree with the spirit of the ordinance, that we can make someone trim a tree, but I disagree with it, that I think the caveat would have to be on their property. That's where I think the ordinance, even when people write ordinances.
I don't know what it says.
No, and I think, I think when you read any legislation, whether it be an ordinance, whether it be a bill, whether it be a statute, you discern what the intent was from a lot of different things, and you understand what they were trying to do. And a lot of times they fail to do that in how they write it. I think they were trying at the time they wrote that ordinance to make sure that whoever owned the land and had a tree on it, that they were going to keep up on it, make sure it did, protect the safety of the village. The intent is perfect, but where it falls on property that is not homeowners, I don't think that it's enforceable. So I'm not saying that.
You're saying that our ordinance is not enforceable?
It may not be. Just like our ordinance about the signs, restricting the political signs is not enforceable. We have it, it's on the books, but it's illegal. So if we were to try to enforce it and we would impose a penalty on someone, then we'd be alive. So as I cannot tell you to enforce that ordinance, I can't tell you to enforce this ordinance until I know who owns that property, and then I'll know.
Once you go through this section of the side, I think it would be important for the planning committee to look at that ordinance and see if any revision was necessary.
I agree.
Thank you, Commissioner, for taking that up.
So I would call, and I'll get an opinion on how much it would cost to give an opinion. I don't think I'd do that much. And I think for how many times we come upon these questions, I think it'd be worth, you know, the amount of money to have an answer that we all know accurately. Keep there.
Anthony, just so you know, I sent the exact letter to both property owners saying that we would be paying for it upfront and that the underlying property owner would be built. That's exactly what the letter said.
And that's exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Exactly right. Okay, so that's on that. I had a question about the Barnheiser property and whether or not we could cite him for the ordinance we talked about in the past. And Dave and I talked at the last council meeting. We felt that because the ordinance allowed for a reasonable, quote-unquote, reasonable amount of time to abate a nuisance, that we probably could not cite him because we probably could not get him to fix it in the amount of time to force permits out. I thought about that a little bit more, and I think we can't cite him.
I thought we were going to do it, period. We were going to cite him before the deadline on this.
We can't, but the problem was, Mr. Major, is if you cited him, this was the thinking, that we would pretty much run out of time for him to abate the nuisance, that he would not have enough time for his, for his permit to have. I don't, I don't see that as much of an issue as I did, because I think you cite him while you're still within the timeframe. And then you allow him to abate it, even though he doesn't have a permit to build. A permit to build, to me, can be distinguished from a permit to comply with an ordinance to abate. So I would, I would approve and give approval to the zoning administrator to cite him under that ordinance and allow him to argue as a defense.
This is under the criminal code.
Yes.
He wouldn't be the person giving the citations.
Well, he would send it down, he would take it down, just like he did, we talked about for Mr. Price's sign. He would take all the photos only if.
But that's a zoning violation. The citations that we're talking about, the organizers, are not in the zoning code. They're in the criminal code.
Check, check. I think I'm.
I'm pretty certain.
Okay.
So that would be.
There'd still be Don, right? And it would be Russ. Yeah, so Don, Don Liam, from Strouders, would be prosecuting, you know, actual, any word came in?
But I just don't want, you know, to a citation when he's not lawfully allowed to.
Got it.
That would probably void it.
Yep. And Dave and Russ, they talked, and I talked as well, so we're on the same page. But I think you can cite him, we can cite him, and let him argue that he doesn't have a permit as to why he shouldn't do it. Let him argue that to the judge.
Well, we don't have much time.
We do have time, because.
25th of September?
I don't think we worry about that as the amount of time to cite him for the nuisance. And he created that a long time ago. Whenever, whenever it's there, it's there.
A suggestion. Okay, when does this expire?
25th of September.
I would suggest that Dave goes to him and he's going to say, "Your building permit has expired," and that, you know, after, after that point in time, you have the opportunity to get another building permit. Now, do we want to give it to him? I would say you give him the opportunity to do that and to fix the problem, but still cite him. And if he refuses to get another building permit, then it's that much more reason to cite him, as he's failing to do his corrections.
What I would suggest is you cite him and you don't renew the building permit. Let him argue that he needs the permit to finish the work. You agree that if he gets the new permit, we will hold off on prosecuting the citation while he finishes it. If he doesn't in a certain amount of time, then we will dismiss the citation. If he doesn't, then the citation is there. That's an incentive for him to do something. So I think I can decide. I don't think it does anything to coax him anymore.
Exactly.
Talk to him till he's blue in the face. We've just got to do something. And if we get told by a judge that it gets thrown out, it gets thrown out. But I believe we have probable cause to cite him and to do something, because we've been more than patient and generous with our, with our changes.
You know, what's the process to get the citation completed?
I was about to talk to Russ and Dave about after the meeting. I imagine if they sell, I have the evidence here from whenever it was taken. We can take more pictures. You take it down to Don Liam, and I have the citation here, the section.
You've identified the section.
I actually have it printed out, thank you. And I'll give it to Russ and then end with Dave, and we'll go down and we'll figure out how to do it. That's on that.
Good.
We got a letter from, oh, any questions on that? We got a letter from Gary Tharpe and Associates, another requesting zoning information. We request that we call six properties that need zoning on them, and need to know if they conform to their district zoning. Again, I don't think we're doing any kind of.
That didn't even come to me.
No.
Who was the company?
Gary Tharpe and Associates.
I've never seen her.
I, I say we don't.
Well, I agree with you. I don't think we should comply. That's their problem. Let them ask the person who's there if they're compliant. They want us to sort of certify that they're compliant. We don't know that, so just ignore it.
Are we having an executive session tonight today?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll talk about the issues that we were talking about in the last executive session and this one. Council had to check on a few things, and I did, and I'll let them know what I found there. And then finally, the speed limit question. Council wanted to know, and I got confused for a second. Was it on 2/24 or on 1/70?
1/70 between.
That's good.
Then maybe it's nine.
Yeah, so Joe DeFury was right, because I said it was on 2/24. He goes, "There's no mess bid on 2/24." He goes, "You mean 1/70?" I said, "Yeah, 1/70." So called Joe DeFury, and he said that there is a process you go through to change the state route, and it has been deemed to be 35, and there's a lot of factors that basically I gave him it's residential. It would actually have been better if it was business, if it had been 25. But by, but by statute, it's 35. To change it, he said, it's hard to do. He directed me to their online site, and there's actually, you need a speed limit study done. And you can either hire a company to do it, or if you're brave enough, you do it on your own. You do things like count the number of houses or farms on the property, number of businesses, number of major businesses, median businesses, finer businesses, how many signalized intersections, lane width, shoulder width, how many crashes occur, the 80% tile speed of traffic. So you actually have to figure out how fast 85% of the traffic goes on that, the 10 mile an hour pace of speed of traffic, regular characteristics. And then on top of everything else, we're in a hole because it's been 35 for so long without a lot of problems, and we have a hurdle to overcome. It's able to be 25. So you're kind of, he goes, "You can do it, but it's going to be very difficult." So the question for council would be, do you want to engage in hiring a firm to do a speed limit study, which has to be done? And by the way, even if the firm or our study says that it should be 25, they can say no, thank you. So you do all the work for them, and they decide that they want to agree with your assessment of what your speed limit should be.
Who are they?
Ohio Department of Transportation.
Oh, yeah.
This is, I'll pass this around. This is what the study, what it entails. Someone or company would have to complete all of that and then do various analyses and calculations and try to help.
These are legislative.
I think you're right. Yeah?
The reason behind the reason required about it, the last one. But there were people complaining that particularly in the morning, trucks were in that area, reaching a brake that just slowed down at different points on the highway. And that's, perhaps you go to people who are experiencing a lot of noise because of that. And really, it's a residential area, and it should be 25, which I agree, that now is worthy of this for 200 yards of roads.
That's your number four.
Russ, good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, report from chief of police and street commissioner.
Oh, okay. No report either, report.
Hey, Russ, red alarm for our Allen Farm.
Yeah. Clear.
All right.
Russ, in the woods, you know, swing, there's this mention bridge.
Yes.
Somebody's had an axle here.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering, our cars could actually drive down there at night.
Yeah.
This guy must be doing it at night. But he cut one of them, and we put tape on it, and now he's cut the other one.
Yeah, we, we have definitely increased our presence in the woods.
He must be doing it at night sometimes. Because it's not for traffic to stop him down at night.
Kids.
Okay, thank you.
That's happened in the past, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Speaking of your extra presence in the woods, you know, I walk the woods a lot now, and I do see the officers down there quite a bit, at least a couple days a week. And I have noticed that many people that previously were walking their dogs without leash, now have a leash. So.
Your presence has been effective in that.
We haven't had any dog issues at all, actually.
Chris, on your report last time, you mentioned about the salt. You had gotten a salt quote.
Yep.
Have we ordered salt? Is there going to be shortage again this year?
Did you do the PO for that? We discussed which line I could take it out of.
Okay, so we need to get that ordered in. Did we have anything stockpiled from last year?
We have a little bit left.
Did you see where the Bible, the weather Bible, or is it all in that saying it's going to be a very bad snowy winter?
We'll be ready. And we're going to start, not the end of this week, beginning of next week. We'll start with the boxes, get them on the trucks, release sheet, try to get ready.
I'd just like to mention to council also that, Russ, I know you've mentioned this before, and I think it's a great idea that you have. Our fine schedule is low in comparison to other entities. Is that correct? And I think that, you know, Russ feels that it's not only fair to raise those to be more comparable to other entities or size, and it's also a source of revenue. And we're not doing it because we're trying to make money, but we are asking people who come through here to obey the traffic laws and to keep our town safe. So I would like to work with Russ on making those fines more comparable and competitive with other entities. And as a, you know, affecting revenue source, I'm thinking that finance is able to do that. And I know he's already done homework for this, and he does a great job of that, as you know.
Okay, but I think you should work with the police committee, too.
Right?
Yeah. Russell, accept the report.
Second.
You can have a report. It's verbal report. Verbal report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So is something to say, Mr. Russell?
This, not, Bill, all Mary, all, from, kept a tree across the street from New School. And I had, as I've done several times before, I had Zeta Tree come over, and I looked at it, and said, "Is it good? Is it bad? Should we get it down, trim it, whatever?" The, I went down to talk to people. Planning, planning, planning. And it is, it is in village, really, the street, Riverside Drive, is 66-foot wide, so that makes it 33 feet on each side. And the, 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 the way goes, starts one foot beyond the outside of the sidewalk. So it is in village, it's in village property. So now, I, I think I gave everybody a copy of Zeta Tree's report, whether it's a, it's a public, I can, copies made, how many copies you need. It should be, as I've done before, the, even if it was a private, if it was on, on private property, it was, they could go to anybody, Zeta Tree, Desert, because I'm sure they probably get most, most of the jobs anyway. But anyway, I recommend that this bill be paid, and it, it has everything, including, like, liability insurance.
Zeta does recommend it come down?
What's that?
Zeta does recommend that it should come down?
Yeah, oh, yeah. It, it, I've gone and looked at it a couple times, and there's a hole in it. Zeta thinks it would strike a light.
Just so everybody knows, the reason I asked, take a look into it, because I had somebody from the school system, the groundspeople, were afraid of it, and thought it should come down because of, you know, it's right across the street from the school, and kids, kids and all that. So it probably should come down.
Yeah, as I say, I, I submitted a report. Everybody got a copy of that report from Zeta some time back, and I had a couple of problems that slowed them down a little. But anyway, if you would please, as I say, I appreciate it. I just have my own copy now. So make me a copy, and how many others?
I'm going to make a motion when it counts to you.
What's the cost on the tree?
And this is something that I got from the plan, the plan map, people, I don't have that kind of government support, because it shows you very, much more clearly than our, our maps show. It shows you where it is, and the, the actual. than our, our maps show, it shows you where it is, and the, the actual line splits, the street split is a hundred and twenty-nine feet from two twenty-four, and then the rest of this little section that is, uh, private.
Motion accept the, the tree condition.
Second. Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, report from engineer.
Okay, last time, we had inquiry about a saw in the woods, right? And we're gonna have a saw come through the woods. Eighteen inch, eighteen inch diameter, and it starts up at Sam's, Sam Scotty, a new saw coming out at six eighty, it's gonna come down, because it's gonna replace the saw that we have now that is leaking, and saw is getting into, into the woods. And it's gonna go through the woods, but follow the line that's in there now.
On the old saw.
The old saw, yeah. And the engineer on this is Moser and Sorakis, and they're our engineers, so they'll, they'll work with our forest board and so forth, and do as least amount of damage as possible. And they're gonna come up to, they're not gonna finish it this, this year, and they're gonna do it in sections, to keep the old saw operable. I think it'll take maybe two years to finish this job. And it's gonna do a lot of good, because we know places that have open overflows, and it's gonna remove that behind Poland Manor, back in there, yeah. So I want to let you know, it's working, okay? You got any questions about that? Okay, I got a, the originals in my box, anybody?
They're starting it now?
Pardon?
They're starting it? Or they're still?
No, they're, they're engineering it right now, yeah.
You anticipate construction this year?
They think they're gonna start, yes. But they're gonna start way up by Sam's Club.
And does this also include what comes on into the village and township?
Yeah, yes ma'am.
That was in the?
It's gonna go, go ahead, ask your question.
No, I was just gonna say, the initial planning that was reported in the sanitary engineers' newsletter, mentioned coming to the village and into the township, and I've only heard you discuss the woods, so it will continue on.
Come to the woods, yes ma'am, right. Okay, and then I got a, a report, Capitol Improvement Report, from Moser and Sorakis also. It's a, a report that's submitted every five years, and there's a copy in the box, anybody wants to get a, get a copy of it. It lays out all the roads, the length of the roads, all the sewers, the length of the sewers, what the original cost would be to, to replace them, and what their repair cost would be, and they're all graded, like one to five. Bad to us. So, the copies are here. I don't think I, I should waste any time on details, because I passed it on, everybody take a peek at it and see what it is. Take a look. Okay, maybe you wanna look at this, too, Bill. Okay, that's all I have for me.
Motion accept the engineer's report, second. All in favor? Post, Mr. Stevens?
I would like to ask council, consider the tree ordinance. Me, it's an absolute, you know, say it just exactly what it is, but it says it's for wording, it has things, and it could have no, in, no, had nothing to do with, with, they've got the tree, these forests, and they get in all sorts of things. And when I get them running block traffic, I'm sure you'll frankly think it's something attached with a, with a, a reaction. But I would like to submit that to you next time, and I don't mean that all of these things should be eliminated, they're, they're just, and I, I think possibly this could, could be true of a lot of several ordinances that have, this is one.
Okay, but Dick, you're gonna concentrate on the tree ordinance?
On the tree.
And you're gonna mark it up?
Yeah.
And bring it to, next time, or whenever you're ready?
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Really, really, the planning commission should be, uh, yeah, if you agree with, uh...
Yeah, that, yeah.
Before, before council.
Oh, oh, oh. Dick, can you sure mark it out? Yeah, you guys.
Right. And then we should make our commendations.
Sure.
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. All right, moving on. Reports from outstanding committees of council, financial wage audit and insurance.
One thing that I did want to point out to you, I think that I neglected when we were talking about the hospitalization. On that letter that you see about the actual changing of the date, what is not reflected in this rate that you see right now, is that on January the fourth, we are still gonna have to pay these amounts that are listed, those three that are listed about halfway through, which is the federal fees, the reinsurance per month, except the market share, two-point four percent premium. I asked her about this, because I said, "If we're getting an increase now, are we on January first going to have to pay that?" And she said, "No." Okay, so, the other things, the fees, federal fees, we will have to pay. And then there's one other issue that she is checking out for us, because in the course of this seminar, entities with fifty people or businesses as well, fifty employees or less, do not have to offer part-time employees hospitalization. The catch is this, the new definition of a full-time worker is thirty hours. So, I've asked Russ about that, and we are gonna have a couple of people who might possibly affect our policy. So that's something to consider. And of course, this would not happen until January first, and she is checking on that for us as well. But I just want you to have a heads up on that. None of, none of the news is terribly good about any of this.
Forgot something. I'm sorry, pull in the reader.
Motion?
Go ahead, Bill.
Motion to accept the plan and its order?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Back to our solicitor.
All right, in reading the statutes, and council has to declare that that property is a nuisance.
We did.
We did honor it.
Yeah, but we didn't do it, we didn't put anything in writing to this kind of...
And declared a nuisance.
Yes, we did. You said, yeah, but we, you said we gotta do it before the twenty-fifth of September.
I don't think we have to, we will, but I don't think we have to, but we will.
We should double check the minutes, but I'm almost certain that the night that you cited those sections, you asked us to declare a nuisance, and we did it that night, correct?
Surprisingly on the ball, man.
You're so good, you don't even remember.
I think you were, I think you were commended for your efforts.
Wow, I should have quit that.
All right, legislation of policy? Police and fire?
Nothing.
Street sidewalks and drainage. Glee per? Reports from boards, planning commission?
Nothing.
Board of zoning appeals?
At the end of the meeting, I'm gonna make a motion to go executive session to discuss possible litigation.
ARB?
Nothing.
Forest board? High Memorial?
Oh, nothing, sorry.
And West Reserve Fire?
Nothing, there's nothing we can cut.
Reports from special committees? Communications from residents? I'll just state your name, and I keep your comments in mind.
Hello again to the village council. It's been several months since I've been here. I'm Carolyn Day, forty-five, Pullman address. And just to recap briefly, I was here several months ago talking about bullying, light harassment, and video cameras on private property. I wanted to give you, I had talked with the mayor about trying to find potential sample ordinances that might be able to make it more efficient for us to consider ordinances about some of these issues. The first issue I'd like to address tonight is light trespass. Noise pollution is well-known, and we don't allow that in our community. The light pollution is being used personally against me as a form of harassment, and it's involved two components of light. One is I was hit in the eye by a red laser light that caused hemorrhage in my eye in May, and then two days later, the onslaught of massive floodlights. Now there's eight bulbs with four of them being massive, those big fluorescent lights that address just my property, just towards my office. The lights go all the way through into my foyer, through my kitchen, dining room, it's just massive. It's been, I'm in the fifth month of this, and it goes on whenever I'm home. The ordinance that I found that might be helpful to us is, talks about some of the benefits, not just to me, but to the whole community, about outdoor lighting, lighting ordinances. It will reduce glare, it will prevent light trespass, and prevent the chance it could be used against, on citizens. It could decrease the chance of destructive ecosystems, wasted energy, and then skyglow. You can't look up and see the stars near my house anymore, there's so much light. My backyard is in perpetual twilight. There is no night in my backyard anymore, and I just think that it is wrong. And there's no ordinance against it in the village of Pullman. So what I would like to pass out, say one, Mr. Limer has a copy of not only the, this is a quick guide that outlines this village of Southampton's ordinance, and I'll provide to Mr. Limer, who writes our ordinances, the sample ordinance that he could use to modify it to fit our village requirements. And I personally feel like we need to really give ordinary citizens the right to have enjoyment and peace in their own backyard. I'd sure like to be able to see night.
Could you just describe the use of the laser light, and what the consequences that they could, what's this laser light have?
Around nine o'clock at night, which in, in the May, June, was when the, it was getting to be twilight, I was sitting in my backyard, and from the left of me emanating from a window upstairs from my neighbor, a red light came and hit me in the eye. It hurt, and I'm a physician, so I knew I hadn't looked at it, it had just hit me from the side, and it did, it took a few days for the blood to show up, but I had a huge subsequent tidal hemorrhage of the entire part of my left eye a few days later, because sometimes it takes a few days for the body to try and heal it, in the process, it damages the blood vessels. So, that took almost two weeks to go away, the blood in my eye. And for someone who's trying to harass you, a quick light that, I don't have video cameras in my backyard, how can I prove it? The only proof I have is that I ended up with a big hemorrhage in my eye, or blood in my eye. The impact of that is that I had to wear laser protective glasses for a month, every time I went in my backyard, so that the, the sunglass, the laser protective glasses would absorb the frequencies of light. And it's not against the law to have light emanating, and how can you prove this? So, this is just one of the components of the harassment that I've been up to. The fact that they have video cameras in my backyard, just my backyard, not theirs, is another issue. It just makes it very, very difficult to live there, and to enjoy my own property. So, the, there's other things going on, and the legal involvement, but it would be very helpful to me as an ordinary citizen, a law-abiding citizen, to be able to have an ordinance that protects me from this massive amount of light that comes, it's turned on when I am there. You know, other, other villages and other places are beginning to realize the impact of light, and when it's being used against you personally, it's just, it's sometimes more than I can bear every night, because it's daily, it's every single night that I'm there.
Have you witnesses, have you witnessed these lights?
Uh, yes, I have. The way it's described from the street, you don't get the full impact, but Carolyn Day's house, he's shooting them right into her house, and you don't get it effectively from the street, but there's light there, absolutely.
And my entire backyard is affected by the placement of the lights. It's twilight, it's not night in my backyard, and my office is the brunt of the lights.
And the use of the laser, I mean, that was substantiated, you have independent?
I made a police report about that.
Yeah. But that, that's quite serious, these laser lights.
And maybe we could include the, the ordinance against using lasers for these purposes?
Well, it's a use of light, obviously.
Use of light.
I go by there, but you don't see it from the street.
You don't see it from the street. You can only see it when you're kind of, when you sit on the side, it's directed directly at me, at my office. The only lights you see from the street are just a few things, their front door. But if you walk down my driveway, you are welcome to. Any member of village council wants to see what this looks like at night, you are welcome to walk onto my driveway, go to my backyard and take a look. And it's, as soon as it's dark, I am home, if they know I'm home.
Yesterday, what can I do about this, anything?
Well, not a lot, it's hard. What I was thinking, as you were talking, I mean, this is, this is more good neighbor stuff than it is legal, you know, thing. So, one thing that I might suggest is, you can go down to the Sibius Struthers, and they have prosecutor meetings.
I've already been that route.
What did, what happened?
Nothing, nothing.
What happened?
The next day after they met with the prosecutor, I was hit with a protective order, based on total fabrications.
Does prosecutor know that they served a protective order?
I don't know. He was supposed to get back to me, and that's my lawyer to contact him. So I have tried to use every legal means, but there is no ordinance, as Russ Beatty told me, there is no ordinance against light trespass, and there are ordinances, and I provided to Mr. Limer a copy of a sample ordinance that seemed to, addresses in particular, from my standpoint, the issue of nuisance, light nuisance, and the fact that it can harm the light, the ability to enjoy your property, and that's included in there, but...
Has your civil lawyer looked at cease and desist on them for the light?
There's no law against it, that's the problem. It's legal for them to have as many lights as they want.
There may not be a criminal law, but there may be a, I know that in California, they had strange cases that you weren't allowed to build a home so high to prevent the other person from enjoying the view, like the people who build the mountains, and if someone built a big home, it would block the view of the mountains, and they, and the lawsuit, even though the property lies on the ground and extends up, and, you know, a civil lawyer might be able to say, "Well, her enjoyment of property is being infringed upon by their actions."
My lawyer would like to see, I have two lawyers now, a litigator and a real, a real estate lawyer, but to have an ordinance in place so that we can do something about this. It's being used progressively around the country, and I think it would be something that would protect citizens, but also, we value wildlife in Pullman, we have the beautiful pollen woods, and it's affecting wildlife. I had a change in the way our, the raccoons affected my property within three days of the light started. the light started. So anyhow, I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate the opportunity to bring this to village council, and I appreciate anything you could do on my behalf.
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, who's gonna handle it?
My lawyer.
Your lawyer?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, we'll have maybe a discussion at our next meeting or something.
Well, we're only working on the ordinance and reviewed with our esteemed solicitor. You know, we have a noise ordinance, why not noise and light? Noise and light. I mean, we have, you can't have, you know, certain noise after certain hours, and light is in the same category. Quiet enjoyment would be fine.
Did you say video cameras?
Are we in favor of this? Everybody in favor of this?
See what happens.
I don't know.
Yeah, in favor, Bob looking at it. Absolutely.
Okay. Are anyone else, residents, having anything to say? Okay, any new business? Any old business? Motions, ordinances, resolutions?
First, I'll make a motion to remove the hazardous tree on Riverside Drive across from the inn and school.
You know which that is?
That's village expense.
All in favor?
At the village expense.
Village's tree.
Okay, that, that's a big lot there, right?
You want a question?
Yeah, okay.
Any opposed?
Is there an address to any of them?
I don't have any information on that.
Any other motions, ordinances, resolutions? You can let me know, Bill. I just made the same proposal.
I'd like to, emergency basis, pass an ordinance accepting the codified ordinances that previously given to the council on emergency basis.
Second, roll call. Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Cernick?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now move to that we pass the codified ordinance.
Second, roll call. Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Cernick?
Yes.
Any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
I'd like to make a motion to renew the hospitalization coverage with medical mutual and change the plan year to 12/1/13 to 11/30/14.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
I'd like to make a motion that we pay additional $14.90 for the paving.
Retroactive to August 14?
Correct. Second, Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, who was the money from SARS to cover that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And did you need a motion to make the payment? Is the payment listed on the sheet that we saw?
No, it's not on the sheet.
Okay. Did you say that you need a motion of amendment? Make payment?
Yes.
Make payment?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to, we didn't do the witness to amend appropriations, okay?
Okay.
Amend appropriations?
No.
I'd like to waive the three readings for an emergency ordinance to amend appropriations.
Do we have it? Do we have the ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah. Roll call. Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yep.
Mr. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion for an ordinance to move this ordinance amending 14/29/13 permanent appropriations and to declare an emergency.
Second, roll call. Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
All right, any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we suspend the orders of day to go into executive session to discuss possible litigation. Have the end of the meeting.
And to discuss legal opinion.
And to discuss legal opinion by the solicitor.
Do that. We'll do that for martial counsel. Second, third readings. Presentation of bills.
Make a motion if the bills we carry. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions from the news media? All right, remarks by counsel. Mr. Cernick? No. No.
Nothing.
Mr. Cassette?
After the dedication of the fire department, go up the street to the backyard in front of Chris and ours for a 767 fundraiser for breast cancer. She's in financial straits. So if you can run up there and have a look at them, they'd be good for us.
Just repeat that to get you to that.
Friend of ours is recovering from breast cancer. There's a fundraiser for her and her husband, and the school of Chris and I, both of them. And there's a fundraiser after the...
Open house.
The open house. They're not tied together at all.
But what's it gonna be?
Back there. It's that past muster reserve one where he answered.
The past question is there, is a copy? Or a response? Bill? Thanks on the continued diligence on this health, health and transit. Very good. And I will not be at the next council meeting on the other time.
Okay, I'm appalled at the problems that Dr. Basis had. Now, we have a pretty nice village here. I think we gotta take some good steps and get this straightened out. She's had grief ever since we lived here. Am I right?
We've had good relations for almost 20 years until they put a pipe on my property during the building renovation.
I remember that, yep. Okay.
Make a motion.
Okay, make a motion that we suspend the orders of day, go into executive session for purposes of litigation and discuss an solicitor's opinion from another counsel.
Second, roll call. Anthony, is it litigation and personnel or just litigation?
Mine is legal opinion.
So it's legal. Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Twenty-seven. And you guys will go with our hospital. We'll go into the... Mr. Rine?